Committee of the whole, the hour is nine o'clock on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. I welcome everyone in person and online who's joined us this morning, and we will begin by taking roll call. And for those of us present today, you'll see we have a few missing faces, and I'll look for a motion to excuse those absences once we have our roll call. So we have three councillors' absence this morning, and well, two councillors and the mayor. councillor Killam, we haven't heard from. He may be along, we don't know. But councillor Windsor sent his regrets, as did mayor Peter Matar. So, right now, I'll look for a motion to that councillor Windsor and mayor Matar's absence from the July 19th, 2022 committee of the whole meeting be excused, moved by councillor Harding, seconded by councillor Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And if we hear from councillor Killam during the run of the meeting, we may make another motion to excuse him as well. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, committee of the whole. Before you, you have the agenda for today's meeting. It's been circulated for about a week. Any additions, deletions, discussion on the agenda this morning? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda, moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Granger. Thank you, councillors. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify now. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Now that we have an approved agenda, I'll look to council to declare any conflict of interest issues. Anyone have any conflict of interest issues this morning with our agenda? Just councillor Killam's leg is a conflict. Who has entered the meeting? Welcome councillor Killam. We're sorry for your...
Oh, well, the rest of me's okay.
Well, we're happier with this this morning. Councillor, we've taken roll call, we'll add you to the list. We've approved our agenda, and we've just asked for conflict of interest. So we'll now look for an approval of the minutes of June 21st. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Hurdle. Discussion on the minutes. Errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And as is customary, once the minutes are approved, we'll look for some discussion on those approved set of minutes. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Any business arising from the minutes of June 21st? Okay, I see none. We'll move right along to administration. Item six A is proclamation requests, emancipation day 2022, National Acadian Day 2022, and National Day for Truth and Reconciliation 2022. I believe we have Kenya, our inclusive community's intern here to give us a presentation this morning. Welcome to committee of the whole, Kenya.
Thank you so much, deputy mayor. Before I start today, I just want to say that I come from traditional unceded, unsurrendered Algonquin Anishnaabe territory. I grew up there, and the knowledge and courage that I bring to this presentation today was wonderfully gifted to me by lovely Anishnaabe folks, and I just want to say that before we begin. And throughout this presentation, because we'll be talking about very serious topics, there will be a couple images throughout to make sure that we understand the gravity of these days and the situations we're discussing. And so, my, I hope everyone's having a great morning, and my proclamation quest is for emancipation day 2022, National Acadian Day 2022, and National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This originates from the Strategy for Belonging Proclamations Policy COMO 2003. The intent is for committee of the whole to recommend that municipal council approve for the proclamation requests as per Proclamations Policy COMO 2003. The discussion, so, the municipality through the Strategy of Belonging commits to promoting the diversity of the region and supporting communities to tell their stories. Additionally, section 4.1 of the Proclamations Policy states that it is the policy of the council to consider requests to proclaim certain causes when such proclamation positively impacts the community. So in consideration of said policy, within the municipality, so, sorry, within the municipality, there are two historically black African Nova Scotian communities, the communities of Pinewood, the community of Pinewood, and the community of Gibson Woods. And the official recognition of emancipation day is an important action towards reparations. A proclamation of this kind is an important action to increase public awareness of the impacts of enslavement of African Nova Scotian communities, as well as African Nova Scotian culture, communities, and heritage. The approval of this proclamation will assist in the promotion of allyship and cultural diversity within the municipality. And these photos are, they are the will of Benjamin Belcher, who was the former owner, the former slave owner of Dina and Nicole, the founder, the Dina and Cole, the founders of Pinewoods. And in this estate, you can see Benjamin Belcher has willed his enslaved people to different family members, and has assigned them different numerical values, and we can really see how dehumanizing the act of enslavement really is, and how greatly the impacts have followed us throughout time. Official, the official recognition of National Acadian Day is an important action to increase public awareness and support of Acadian history, culture, and communities. A proclamation of this kind promotes cultural diversity within the municipality. And here, we can see two different photos. The first photo is of a priest in Clare blessing a fleet of boats on National Acadian Day in nineteen, in the 1950s. And then, the picture beside it is a young person who has just won a prize, and is smiling very happy, and is very proud to be celebrating their culture on National Acadian Day in, I believe, the 1950s again, so we can just see how long and how important these traditions are. And my last discussion begins with the municipality of county, the municipality of the County of Kings is located in Mi'kmaqie, the territory of the Mi'kmaqie people. Official recognition of National Truth and Reconciliation Day is an important action towards truth and reconciliation, and is consistent with the municipality's obligations set out in the final report of the Truth and Reconciliation Committee. Within, found in the region are two indigenous communities, namely Gloskap First Nation and Annapolis Valley First Nation, as well as a rural and urban indigenous population. The official recognition of this day assists in increasing public awareness of indigenous communities, heritage, language, and culture. And we can see in this photo, there are students at Shubenakidi Residential School playing the recorder. I think in this photo, it's very clear how young these children are, and how they, how strong their desire is to have fun, and how heartbreaking it is that they were restricted to that terrible building right next to it. And that is a picture of Shubenakidi. And so, the strategic plan alignment is strong communities, and so the official recognition of cultural and community dates of observance is an integral action development under the cultural celebration and reflection of diversity pillar of the Strategy of Belonging. And the implementation, we're hoping to publish the approved copy of the proclamations on the municipality's website and social media platforms. And the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim August 1st, 2022, emancipation day in the municipality of the County of Kings. That the committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim August 15th, 2022, National Acadian Day in the municipality of the County of Kings. And the committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim September 30th, 2022, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Thank you so much, Kenya. Do we have any questions of our presenter this morning? No, still too early for everybody, maybe? Or else you just covered it all, and you did a wonderful job. Thank you so much for being with us this morning. So Kenya graciously already read out our motions. I will just take them one by one, so we're going to look at the first one around emancipation day in the municipality of the County of Kings. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Meisner, seconded by councillor Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And the full text of all the proclamations are also included in our agenda package on pages 15, 16, and 17. And they include the actual dates. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Eight in favor now, because we have councillor Killam with us. The next motion, that committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim August 15th, 2022, National Acadian Day in the municipality of the County of Kings. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Hurdle, seconded by councillor Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. And finally, the motion is that committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim September 30th, 2022, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in the municipality of the County of Kings. Do I have a mover? Moved by councillor Meisner. Thank you, councillors. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. It's tricky with our low numbers today. See everybody. Oh, there you go. Yes, no worries. Thank you so much, Kenya, for being with us this morning and for your presentation. Councillor Armstrong?
Thank you, deputy mayor. I appreciate the fact that the proclamations are in our package, and that they will be posted on social media, but I think it would be important to have them read into our record, that we actually hear them.
Sure.
If somebody would be so kind.
Yeah. Do you want me to do it, or are you looking at Kenya?
I was thinking Kenya could do it for us.
It does declare that I, Peter Matar, following the unanimous resolution of the council of the municipality of the County of Kings, so I wonder if we are bound to have a, the mayor read them, or a member of council? How do proclamations work officially? Do we know?
I think it's just a matter of information.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we're not asking anybody to sign them today, but I think it's important that we read them into the record.
Okay.
And instead of making people find them, if they're reading and watching, I think they have the right to hear them.
Yeah, for information, that's, that's totally acceptable. Kenya, did you want to come back and, and read them?
Can I just have your copy?
Absolutely. I, I just need them back after, but yeah, you can have them. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Good suggestion, councillor Armstrong.
So, the proclamation for emancipation day, August 1st, 2022. Whereas August 1st is celebrated as emancipation day, a time to celebrate African-Canadian communities' heritage and history. Whereas the proclamation of emancipation day is an opportunity to remember, reflect, and learn about the enslavement of African Canadians and anti-black racism in Canada. And whereas slavery was officially abolished in Canada in 1834, yet some 188 years later, we felt society still needs reminding that Black Lives Matter. The Canadian House of Commons designates August 1st as emancipation day in Canada, and since 2021, the province of Nova Scotia recognizes August 1st annually as emancipation day. Whereas the municipality of County of Kings is home to two historical African Nova Scotian communities, Pinewoods and Gibson Woods. Whereas the African diaspora anti-black racism lens and reparations is a fundamental lens of the Strategy of Belonging, whereas the municipality's vision is a community of communities where all people belong. Therefore be it, following the unanimous resolution of the council of the municipality of Kings, August 1st, 2020 is, I'm not too sure how to read this part, because I'm not mayor.
Okay. It's just for information, so you can just read it as it is.
Okay, okay. I hereby proclaim August 1st, 2022 to be emancipation day in the municipality of the County of Kings. I encourage residents, businesses, and community groups to learn about African Nova Scotians' communities' culture, ways of doing, and to take the opportunity to reflect on the story of the municipality of the County of Kings and wider Nova Scotia's vibrant African/Black community. And proclamation for National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. September, whereas September 30th is National Day for Truth and Reconciliation or Orange Shirt Day in Canada. Whereas the real and lasting legacy of residential schools continues to impact indigenous persons, families, and communities. Whereas the municipality of the County of Kings acknowledges and honors the lost children and survivors of residential schools and their families and communities. And whereas the responsibility to move forward in truth is a vital component of meaningful reconciliation, and whereas we are all treaty people, therefore be it resolved that I, Peter Matar, following the unanimous resolution of the council of the municipality of the County of Kings, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2022, as National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in the municipality of the County of Kings. I encourage residents, businesses, and community groups to learn about the residential school system, its harms and lasting impacts on indigenous persons, families, and communities across the country, including here in Kings County. And then, the proclamation for National Acadian Day, August 15th. Whereas August 15th is celebrated as National Acadian Day, a time to celebrate contributions of the Acadian community. And whereas the proclamation of National Acadian Day is an opportunity to highlight Acadian culture, heritage, and history. Whereas Acadian communities and individuals have been celebrating July 15th as National Acadian Day since 1881, and the Canadian government passed the National Acadian Day Act in 2003, formally recognizing each August 15th in Canada as National Acadian Day. And whereas the Strategy for Belonging promotes equity, diversity, and inclusion. Whereas the municipality's goal is a community of communities where all people belong, and therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Peter Matar, following the unanimous resolution of the council of the municipality of the County of Kings, do hereby proclaim August 15th, 2022, to be National Acadian Day in the municipality of the County of Kings. I encourage residents, businesses, and communities, group, and community groups to learn about the Acadian community, their language, culture, ways of doing, and take this opportunity to reflect on the municipality's story, and the wider story of Nova Scotia's vibrant Acadian community.
Thank you very much. And if you don't mind, I'll take those back. Oh, thank you so much for reading them into the record for us. All right, so that concludes item 6A. Our next item, 6B, is toward equity and diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings, implementation plan. So I'd invite Kenesha Gordon up to the microphone this morning to give us her presentation on her request for decision. Welcome.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor. Good morning, council. Good morning to everyone listening. In the spirit of accessibility, I just want to say that I am a black woman. I am wearing red. I have thick, kinky curly hair, and I have dark brown eyes. And just in case if you're wondering where my accent comes from, it is from Jamaica. Que, teleusi, Kenesha Gordon. With gratitude to community partners, including indigenous communities, African Nova Scotian, Black youth, persons living with disabilities, two S-L-G-B-T-Q-I-A-plus communities, migrants, women, and diversity, Kings County, I will be presenting the Strategy for Belonging Implementation Plan. The origin of the strategy originated in December, on December 7th, to be exact, 2021, where municipal council adopted toward equity and diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings. The intent... My slides aren't moving, just bear with me one moment.
Bear with us, folks, just a little technical glitch here this morning. As a mom of three kids, I haven't heard this much silence in a long time, so I'm kind of appreciating it. There's, oh, here we are, okay. We're at, this is origin, I think we were at implement, intent.
Yes.
Yes, we were. There we are. Good to go. Go ahead. I think we're okay.
Maybe there's some battery issues here.
Okay.
Okay. And we continue. Intent for committee of the whole to recommend that municipal council approve toward equity and diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings. Implementation plan to formally enable the municipality to operationalize the strategy for belonging. Discussion? On December 7th, 2021, municipal council adopted the strategy for belonging. The strategy was developed in strong partnership with community, and is a pathway toward justice and belonging within the municipality. The success of the strategy is dependent on the adoption of the implementation plan. The implementation plan is designed to address and redress systemic inequities, and strengthen relationship with community through the integration of three lenses, and operationalization of six comprehensive action development pillars. The three lenses are reconciliation and Mi'kmaqie Treaty Rights. And this lends zoom in on the steps that the municipal council need to take in, in, in order to reconcile, particularly with our indigenous community, and how we will also utilize or embed, rather, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship into what we do. The next is African diaspora, anti-black racism, and reparation. And this is taken into consideration historic Black communities within the municipality of the County of Kings, particularly Gibson Woods and Pinewoods, and those who identify with the Black communities, and other ways to systemically and socially address reparation. The final lens is equity, inclusion, and diversity. This one, we consider to be the all-encompassing, all-communities, because we have been asked on multiple occasions, so we're seeing indigenous communities, we're seeing the African and Black communities, whereas my community. All communities are connected in the equity, inclusion, and diversity lens. The focus areas, or the six action development pillars, are, one, demonstrating leadership and enhancing representation. And through this pillar, the municipality will focus on the development of high-level internal policies, including, but not limited to equitably, equitable hiring, training practices, and diverse representation on municipal committees, and equitably delivering municipal services in an inclusive, effective, and collaborative manner. The goal of this particular action development is to enhance the quality of life for all, and create a solid foundation to achieve the vision of a community of communities where all people belong. Next is economic empowerment. Through this pillar, the municipality will increase efforts to connect diverse business owners with support networks...
of the County of Kings. I encourage residents, businesses and community groups to learn about the residential school system, its harms and lasting impacts on Indigenous persons, families and communities across the country, including here in Kings County. And then the proclamation for National Acadian Day, August 15th. Whereas August 15th is celebrated as National Acadian Day, a time to celebrate contributions of the Acadian community. And whereas the proclamation of National Acadian Day is an opportunity to highlight Acadian culture, heritage and history. Whereas Acadian communities and individuals have been celebrating July 15th as National Acadian Day since 1881. And the Canadian government passed the National Acadian Day Act in 2003, formally recognizing each August 15th in Canada as National Acadian Day. And whereas the Strategy for Belonging promotes equity, diversity and inclusion. Whereas the municipality's goal is a community of communities where all people belong. And therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Peter Murtart, following the unanimous resolution of the council of the municipality of the County of Kings, do hereby proclaim August 15th, 2022 to be National Acadian Day in the municipality of the County of Kings. I encourage residents, businesses and communities group and community groups to learn about the Acadian community, their language, culture, ways of doing and take this opportunity to reflect on the municipality's story and the wider story of Nova Scotia's vibrant Acadian community.
Thank you very much. And if you don't mind, I'll take those back. Oh, thank you so much for reading them into the record for us. All right, so that concludes item 6A. Our next item, 6B, is Toward Equity and Diversity: A Strategy for Belonging in the Municipality of the County of Kings Implementation Plan. So I'd invite Kenesha Gordon up to the microphone this morning to give us her presentation on her request for decision. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Good morning, council. Good morning to everyone listening. In the spirit of accessibility, I just want to say that I am a black woman. I am wearing red. I have thick kinky curly hair and I have dark brown eyes. And just in case if you're wondering where my accent comes from, it is from Jamaica. Que, teleusi, Kenesha Gordon. With gratitude to community partners, including Indigenous communities, African Nova Scotian, Black, youth, persons living with disabilities, 2SLGBTQIA+ communities, migrants, women and diversity Kings County, I will be presenting the Strategy for Belonging Implementation Plan. The origin of the strategy originated in December, on December 7th to be exact, 2021, where municipal council adopted Toward Equity and Diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings. The intent... My slides aren't moving. Just bear with me one moment.
Bear with us, folks. Just a little technical glitch here this morning. As a mom of three kids, I haven't heard this much silence in a long time, so I'm kind of appreciating it. There's...oh, here we are. Okay. We were at...this is origin. I think we were at implement intent. Yes, we were. There we are. Good to go. Go ahead. I think we're okay.
Okay. And we continue. Intent: For committee of the whole to recommend that municipal council approve Toward Equity and Diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings. Implementation Plan: To formally enable the municipality to operationalize the strategy for belonging. Discussion: On December 7th, 2021, municipal council adopted the strategy for belonging. The strategy was developed in strong partnership with community and is a pathway toward justice and belonging within the municipality. The success of the strategy is dependent on the adoption of the implementation plan. The implementation plan is designed to address and redress systemic inequities and strengthen relationship with community through the integration of three lenses and operationalization of six comprehensive action development pillars. The three lenses are reconciliation and Mi'kmaq treaty rights. And this lens zoom in on the steps that the municipal council need to take in order to reconcile particularly with our Indigenous community and how we will also utilize or embed, rather, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship into what we do. The next is African diaspora, anti-black racism and reparation. And this is taking into consideration historic Black communities within the municipality of the County of Kings, particularly Gibson Woods and Pine Woods and those who identify with the Black communities. And other ways to systemically and socially address reparation. The final lens is equity, inclusion and diversity. This one we consider to be the all encompassing, all communities, because we have been asked on multiple occasions. So we're seeing Indigenous communities. We're seeing the African and Black communities. Where is my community? All communities are connected in the equity, inclusion and diversity lens. The focus areas or the six action development pillars are, one, demonstrating leadership and enhancing representation. And through this pillar, the municipality will focus on the development of high-level internal policies, including but not limited to equitable hiring, training practices and diverse representation on municipal committees and equitably delivering municipal services in an inclusive, effective and collaborative manner. The goal of this particular action development is to enhance the quality of life for all and create a solid foundation to achieve the vision of a community of communities where all people belong. Next is economic empowerment. Through this pillar, the municipality will increase efforts to connect diverse business owners with support networks, business development webinars and exposure to opportunities to positively affect the fiscal inclusion of diverse populations and economic landscape of the Kings region. The third action development pillar is truth, awareness and advocacy. Through this pillar, the municipality will partner with Indigenous, African Nova Scotian, Black, 2SLGBTQIA+ communities and persons living with disabilities to provide and promote publicly available allyship education, resources, training and awareness. And I want to point out that in consultation with community and coming out of our Pride Month activities, we integrated the 2SLGBTQ+ communities. From the strategy, we had the Indigenous and the African Nova Scotian community. But we do believe that it was significant that the 2SLGBTQIA+ community be incorporated. And we also want to just remind community that the strategy is a living document and so as we continue to gather feedback from community, we will make the necessary adjustment to ensure that we're meeting the need of community. Through this pillar, the municipality will also utilize its social and political power to collaborate with other orders of government to advocate and support renaming, replacing and providing additional interpretation, in cooperation with community that is, around assets and places managed by other levels of government or privately that reflect racist or oppressive history. An example of this is Cornwallis Street. And we are aware that there are some folks who will ask, why is it that we are invested in renaming streets? The truth is, symbols and messages are extremely important in creating a culture of belonging. And streets such as Cornwallis Streets are reminders and also are symbolic of hate. Edward Cornwallis is documented in history as being a very brutal human being, one who is responsible for the loss of many lives, particularly from the Indigenous community. And the municipality of the County of Kings, being seated in McMackey, owed to the Indigenous community as an act of reconciliation to rename streets such as Cornwallis Street to ensure that we can move together with mutual respect and with genuine action toward reconciliation. The next pillar is cultural celebration and reflection of diversity. Through this pillar, the municipality will promote universal access to culture through an accessible event framework that includes guidelines, described events and interpreters. The municipality will also take action to consider tangible and intangible support for historically marginalized and in some cases excluded communities by proclaiming cultural days of significance in the municipality, raising representative flags on the municipal flagpole and working with community to host education and awareness campaign. The next pillar is creating safe spaces, land and built environment. Through this pillar, the municipality will improve access to community spaces through a comprehensive review of facilities and booking system, review fee structure to eliminate social and economic barriers, develop funding criteria for municipal contributions to facilities or projects that include requirements for gender-inclusive washroom facilities and collaborate with Indigenous communities to develop a reconciliation garden and commemorative project in honor of murdered and missing Indigenous women and girls and Two-Spirit people. The final pillar is access and equitable service delivery. Through this pillar, the municipality will increase efforts to deliver municipal services to reach, impact and increase service access among historically marginalized communities. Implement culturally competent and targeted recreation projects and programs co-developed with the communities they are intended to serve and utilize its social, political and economic power to eliminate systemic barriers, improve access and service delivery to all communities. Committee of the whole's recommendation for approval of the Strategy for Belonging Implementation Plan will be an accountability measure. By this, it will formally ensure the strategy is not a standalone project of the municipality, but a strategic policy framework integrated into all municipal departments, programs and service models. The final implication of this implementation plan, a budgetary allocation of $40,000 was approved for year one of this plan. And municipal staff are also exploring additional funding sources for the implementation plan. In terms of strategic plan alignment, the implementation plan aligns with the strong communities pillars of the strategic plan. And what this means is that the strategy's implementation plan is designed in alignment with this particular pillar. This priority is to support vibrant, diverse, welcoming and sustainable communities through enhanced infrastructure, programming, engagement opportunities, advocacy and responsible land use planning. Implementation: Upon approval, municipal staff will begin to operationalize the implementation plan to align municipal policies, services, programs and communication framework to the strategy. Engagement: A series of community engagements and strategic reviews were conducted with community partners, including representation from the Indigenous, African Nova Scotian, Black, women, persons living with disabilities and historically marginalized communities. Numerous discussions about the implementation plan development, diverse representation and community ways of doing were at Diversity Kings County Committee meetings. Recommendation: That committee of the whole, that committee of the whole recommend municipal council approve Toward Equity and Diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings Implementation Plan dated July 19, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kenesha. Are there any questions of our presenter this morning before we look to the motion? There's quite a lot of detail in there. No questions? Okay. Well, the motion reads that committee of the whole recommend municipal council approve Toward Equity and Diversity, a strategy for belonging in the municipality of the County of Kings Implementation Plan dated July 19, 2022. Do I have a mover? Counselor Granger, seconded by Counselor Meisner. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify now. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Gordon, this morning. Very excited to get going and to see this implemented, I think, as the rest of council are. So thank you so much for leading us through it this morning.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. So moving on, still on item six, administration. We're looking at item C, Service Exchange Renegotiation and MG Review Membership Survey. And we have Greg Barr, who is our Director of Finance and IT Services? No, yes, Director of Finance and IT. Here to present this morning. And it looks like Mr. Conrod is also here to present.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. While Director Barr is setting up, I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. And if you permit, I would have a concluding comment at the end of his presentation. As you know, we often present or develop and present policy considerations for your review. This is one that I personally would consider to be a very substantive matter, so a weighty matter and certainly in your purview as elected officials. So as always, would encourage your debate and questioning and certainly if you have any questions of clarification to ask staff, these are only draft recommendations put in front for your, in front of you for your consideration. And as I mentioned, I think this is a bit out of the ordinary in terms of the weight or the gravity of the topic at hand.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
So we'll see if we have any technical issues today with this.
Hopefully, the technology also recognizes the seriousness and weightiness of this topic.
It's not cooperating today, is it?
That's okay. As long as we're all on point, the technology will follow after.
All right. Give me one second here just to get everything together. All right, so as the CAO mentioned, this is a request for decision and a presentation in relation to the questions that were put forth by NSFM through the, I'll refer to them as SERMgar, so Service Exchange Renegotiation and Municipal Government Act Review Committee. So I don't know if SERMgar is even easier, but I'll just refer to it as a committee moving forward. So the intent obviously taken right from the RFD is to provide committee of the whole with proposed responses to the membership survey issued by Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities on behalf of the Service Exchange Renegotiation and Municipal Government Act Review Committee, the committee. All right, so as you know, based on the briefing that was provided back in June, the committee developed and distributed the survey to the municipalities of the province. And the survey is really intended to solicit, as the CAO mentioned, the official position of municipal councils. So senior management, the CAO, deputy CAO, directors, we've prepared the responses that you see in front of you today. They're certainly just suggested responses, but it is, in the end, supposed to be the position of the councils. So you'll notice as you go through the, through the questions, you'll notice two themes that the municipality has put forward really as part of their responses. And the first question, or I guess the second question, the first question is what municipality are you? The second question is really where we kind of dive into some of these right off the bat. And really, it's about the alignment of service delivery responsibility to the source of taxation collected. So certainly not a new concept that's put in front of, or has been put in front of municipalities of the province, but aligning really income or consumption-based taxation versus property taxation and aligning those service delivery responsibilities accordingly, whether it be through the province or the municipality. And then the second theme that you'll notice throughout is a discussion around the scale of municipal units to really deal with the fiscal capacity concerns that really would be there to effectively address any service delivery disentanglement that'll be inherently part of any kind of renegotiation of the MOU with the province. So we'll touch on a lot about both those topics, the alignment and with the scale due to fiscal capacity. And you'll see that kind of uniform theme as we kind of go through a lot of the responses that we're proposing. So with that, what anticipate probably doing today to make it the most efficient is to kind of walk through, there's 20 questions. Some of them are very quick. Some of them are a little more involved and certainly question number two is probably the most involved. And really kind of tackle them one at a time. And if there's any comments or proposed changes or really kind of at a high level items you'd like to see contained within some of the responses, we'll probably hit them one at a time, I would say. So keep in mind that there may be some responses that might be later on in the survey that we won't be able to get to, obviously, when we start discussing some of the responses. But probably the most efficient way is to kind of tackle them one at a time. So like I said, the first question was just simply our names, so we're starting with question two. And that question, I'll read, I'll read each of the questions upfront without a lot of the background information that they have in the actual survey that's contained within the appendix. But question two is considering the responsibilities listed above, so it outlines really what the municipal and provincial responsibilities are within the question. Which responsibilities does your council believe municipalities should maintain or assume and why? So the responses to our question, and I'm certainly not going to read word for word, but we keep that very, we introduce certainly the first part about the provincial delivery of people's services, really generated from consumption and income-based taxation. Then we get into talking a little bit about how the municipal delivery of property services really is, should be from property-based taxation, really that's, you know, the municipal order of government and we touch on that. So then we touch on a little bit about prior reports. So obviously the Graham Commission back in the 70s, the task force on local government during the 1995 service exchange. We feel that disentanglement was never really achieved in the past. So we make a point of noting that that's been the objective, but it's never really been truly achieved in the way that it was, I think, intended from both those timeframes. And so we kind of go on to say that combining service exchange with the consolidation creation of appropriately scaled municipal units is kind of the key with all of this. And so when you look at post the 1995 service exchange, the 1999 Roads and Responsibilities Review and certainly the 2013 fiscal review, there's a number of areas where service delivery, fiscal responsibility continue to be blurred. So we've got some examples in there around healthcare. As you know, there's a number of municipalities that are involved in construction of health centers, doctor recruitment efforts, policing, we touched on that. There's a lot to kind of dive into as it relates to that. And some of the key points that we kind of mentioned were that there's, municipalities have minimal influence on, on contract negotiations and service levels, even though they're the major contributor between the provincial and municipality, spread of the costs. And one thing is, you know, that the costs that are billed to the municipalities are based on budgets. It doesn't always align with the actual officers that are on the ground at any given time within a municipal unit. So there's some areas within that that are obviously concerning. Pre-1995 local roads, another example that we threw in there, and obviously that's around that municipalities contribute financially to that, but have really not a lot of impact in terms of what roads or what priorities are for maintenance. And then education, certainly with our budget being about 25% of the municipal budget towards education expenses, we contribute significantly as do other municipalities to what would be considered a really a people's service. So we kind of specifically identify those in the questions. And then we kind of talk a little bit about the intent from back in the 1995 service exchange was really to create financially viable local governments. And since that time, since 1995, obviously, there's been a number of municipal units that have dissolved. There's a number that continue to be threatened with dissolution due to fiscal concerns or financial insolvency. And, you know, we fear that that trend could continue and that both orders of government risk having consolidation happen on really an inappropriate scale in order to address some of those financial viability concerns. And then just on the next slide, we go on to say as part of this response to the question that the province really needs to take a leadership role and to make decisions that are based on evidence as opposed to, you know, any kind of emotional or historical constraints or emotional considerations or historical constraints to look at... constraints, or emotional considerations or historical constraints, to look at really creating the appropriate scale and to reshape the municipal landscape. We think the responsibility is more at a leadership level with the province. And that will allow municipalities to be able to have the resources they need to challenge both the current and future concerns or challenges that may be in line for the municipality. And so, we kind of wrap up that question by speaking a little bit around revenue and expenditure, neutral service exchange. It should be really a neutral impact when you look at any kind of service exchange, and that when you're undertaking it, it can only be done in the context of that structural reform that we've already talked about. And so, we use an example that certainly for municipality of County Kings, you know, open to looking at the transfer of local roads, if that's considered, you know, versus the transfer of financial responsibility for people services, such as education because of the large budget associated with that. So, with that, a realignment of people versus property-type services, certainly, we can look at some of those exchanges, but only under the umbrella of revenue expenditure neutrality. So, like I said, question two is kind of the more comprehensive one, where we introduce a number of the theme topics that we talked about. And I think it would be an appropriate time now to just kind of hear any input or comments from committee about that.
Okay, great. Counselor Granger.
Yes, this is a lot. It's great. However, I think all of us should be present to have this discussion. It's a pretty big one, and it's a pretty heavy one. And I think including everyone, you know, Counselor Windsor and the mayor, is it, you know, if we're being asked to make any kind of decision, would be a good way to go to have all of us here. I appreciate that it's here right now, and we're doing it. I just wondered how everybody else felt about that as well.
Will there be other opportunity to have these conversations with others present? Like, will this be coming back to us at another time? Is this step one of a process, or any thoughts from staff?
Yeah. No, thank you. It's certainly a recommendation from committee to council.
Okay.
So, there will be an opportunity at council to have weigh-in from other members of the community at the whole. And it is, in context, it's a response to a survey by NSFM, so I'm sure there'll be ongoing dialogue about this. Certainly not probably an end result, but more of initiation of a discussion.
Yeah, I would, yeah, there's, I'm hearing lots of feedback. I'm sorry if everyone else can hear that, or if it's just me. Is council comfortable proceeding today and allowing the mayor and Counselor Windsor to sort of watch the conversation and contribute their views at the next council meeting? Or are we intending to send this at September council?
It was anticipated to come back for a special council on July 26.
Oh, right. Okay, yes. That's not too far. Is that okay with you, Counselor Granger? Are you comfortable still having the discussion today while we're here and kind of primed for it? We have other lights, so, I mean, keeping in mind what Counselor Granger has said. Counselor Killam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there still opportunity to input into this proposal, is it to the province?
Yeah, through you, Deputy Mayor, to the councilor. Absolutely. This is being brought forward, and I assume you mean to input from council today.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. This is meant as just recommendations from staff based on our review of the questions, but certainly, it's council's questions, and any proposed changes or modifications are certainly encouraged.
Okay. Thanks. I have a couple. Thank you.
There are no other lights, Counselor. If you want to bring up anything related to question two at this moment?
I'll wait to hear the rest of the presentation and maybe plug it in where it might be possible.
Sure, yeah. Any thoughts on question two? I had one. The emphasis on property tax for property services versus people services and people tax. Is that, is the main driving force between making that distinction, the, just for the sake of disentanglement, or is there an argument to be made that the financial capacity that can be generated through property tax is sufficient to cover property services? Like, is there, because when I'm reading the answer, the argument seems is because it makes sense, but not because the financial, the finances generated through property tax are adequate or appropriately placed to fund property services. So, maybe that, maybe we get there in the question. But, yeah, is it just for the sake of disentanglement? Like, is there further argument to be made for making that distinction beyond just that it makes sense?
Yes, certainly. I believe it's both. When you look at the intent around disentanglement conversation and about the source of the taxation, it really leads to a lot of blurred responsibilities and confusion. So, whether it's, it's not so much necessarily that property taxation now is adequate to fund some of these property, it's that perhaps it should be. Like, if there's a change that needs to happen, you know, up or down in terms of property taxation to accommodate the needs associated with property-related services, then that should be done, to align that source of taxation with that source of expenditure requirements. But really, it's about those blurred lines and the gray areas, and we touch on a number of them throughout the questions, especially when you look at things like education, policing. It gets very, it's very much entangled. And by aligning it with that kind of lens, you end up having very much, I think, a better approach associated with who's responsible for what. And then the taxation can apply from there. So, it is both, really, to answer your question.
And just to follow up, and then I'll go to you, Counselor Armstrong, if that's okay? Has there been any conversation about whether or not the model of property tax itself is overdue to be changed? I know our current premier, in his role as opposition leader several years ago, had said if he were to win, he would abolish property tax altogether and move to an income-based model of taxation for municipal government. I, that's probably beyond, like, the conversation within this survey. But is there any talk of that going in that direction? Or is that way too, is this way too early in the process to even be talking about that? But I guess I'm saying, is the assumption that we're going to continue with property tax forever?
Yeah. Didn't get into contemplating any kind of change in the source of taxation, although we do touch on other revenue sources and identify those. But really, more so the focus on scale and the ability to be able to address major expenditure concerns, especially infrastructure-related concerns, without a lack of appropriate scale. But certainly, property taxation was still contemplated, and we didn't sway from that in terms of the responses of the survey.
Probably makes sense. Okay. Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It comes up in this question two, and like you said, there's 20 questions. And I just want to know, it's, there's one sentence here that says revenue expenditure neutral service exchange should be examined in the context of regional structural reform. Is that your way of saying amalgamation, consolidation? Because that's an underlying theme through all of the 20 questions. And I just want to know if that's where you're going with that.
I'm not, is someone else controlling? Okay. Oh, it's for the video. Okay, thank you. I was like, this keeps going on and off without me doing anything.
Through the Deputy Mayor to you, Counselor Armstrong. So, the discussion around that neutrality associated with the service exchange, yes, we are talking about it from a regionalization point of view. So, throughout the themes of the questions, and we touch on it probably mostly in question 13, that when we talk about scale, that we feel that regionalization is the only way to really address scale. And that doesn't mean, you know, just villages, or just towns, or counties, or it's everybody. We're talking about the kind of issues that would be affected regionally, impact counties and impact either some of the larger units, maybe less so municipalities like HRM. But the other units are just, from a scale perspective, and it's touched on a lot, even when you look back in the documentation in the fiscal review from 2013, they do an analysis of, you know, a penny on the tax rate as it relates on a larger scale basis, and they touch on a lot about regionalization back there. And we've certainly looked at it, that the tax rate that would be applied to, you know, particularly smaller municipal units that don't have scale now at all, is astronomical for undertaking some of the infrastructure-type concerns if they're not fully resourced appropriately to be able to deal with those. So, regionalization really helps eliminate a lot of that, just mostly from a financial point of view, and we touched on a lot later on in the survey about why. So, that's why it is a common theme, is that we're putting forward and on behalf of suggestions for this council to consider submitting as part of the survey, that a regional approach that is broader than just amalgamation and broader than just dissolution or any other terms associated with it, and has a non-organic type of approach that is more top-down with provincial leadership, is the theme throughout here. And it does get touched on in this question, you're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Killam, and then our CAO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going back a little bit in time right now with respect to the direction of regionalization. I'm not, I don't know if I'm for or against it, whatever. Could be good. Could be. But I do reflect back in 1994, when the province was going to force amalgamation on Kings County. And the biggest issue that came up was the fact that the rural municipality and some of the commercial aspects of the taxation system, it was calculated by, there was a panel that calculated that the increase in taxes would be a 30% increase for the rural municipality, which led to a tax revolt. And I just wanted to caution, if we're going in that direction, we need to have numbers as to the impact it's going to be on the urban tax rate and the rural tax rate. And I wouldn't want to see a repeat of what happened then, because it was a very intense time. And I just wanted to let you know, I lived through that, and I was on council at the time. So, maybe a further discussion at some point, if necessary. But that's my little say on this one right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Deputy. I just wanted to comment on your question about people versus property taxation as what some would refer to as envelope funding. And in my mind, it also speaks to public comprehension of what the tax is collected and how it's used. So, I think there is some, it's not fully recognized out there in the public that about 50, now I'm rounding here quite liberally, but about 50 cents of every tax dollar we collect go to mandatory contributions for people services, such as education and corrections and those types of things. So, yeah, I think it would help put things in separate bins, that if you collect one type of tax, they have the authority and the leadership over those programs and service delivery. If it's that, if that's people tax, it's things like education. If it's property-related services, that's fully funded, 100 cents of the property tax dollars. So, it makes the general public more knowledgeable about how their different forms of taxation are being spent and used, and who has authority over those programs and services.
Is there anything in this document that highlights that as a potential advantage?
Perhaps not.
I'm sorry, I turned your mic off.
It's all right. I don't want the camera on. Perhaps that's something that could be highlighted a little more, yeah.
Okay, great. It might come up later, I'm just curious. Counselor Hurdle, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm seeing a theme in some of these, the service exchange, and I'm wondering if that's even an appropriate naming for it, because it looks more like a bill exchange where the province has maintained the authority and grasp of control while having, not alleviating themselves of the responsibility and the ability to make decisions for the municipality. So, while we're paying the bills, we're not actually getting to make any choices like policing, local roads, education, healthcare. So, I see it's highlighted in a theme, but not specifically addressed in the answer as a bolded point, and I'm wondering if that could be more of a, more emphasis on that point as opposed to just kind of gingerly leading into the idea.
Good note, Counselor. Any thoughts on that, Mr. Barr? Or you don't really need to, it's a good, but it is a good note.
Yeah, no, it's a good comment, and I think more so from the service exchange is that, well, what would be realigned back and forth to correct that billing discrepancies that are there? So, it is kind of probably a confusing term when you just look at it in isolation of service exchange. There certainly are billing consequences associated with that, but point taken, so I'd made a notice.
I don't have any other lights for question two. Question three.
All right, thank you. So, question number three deals with provincial responsibilities. And again, they reference the list that they provide and say, considering responsibilities listed above, which responsibility, excuse me, does your province believe, does your council believe the province should maintain or assume, and why? So, proposed responses in here is again with that same theme, is that alignment of the people services with the province, property services with the municipality, is certainly paramount, and looking at revenue expenditure neutrality. We also talk a bit about, and we touched on this in a few spots within the questions, that it must go on, just, must go beyond just balancing the total municipal impact, like would have happened back in 1995 with the service exchange, that there's inequalities among municipal units, certainly for Kings. J-class roads comes to mind in terms of the number of J-class roads, the kilometers that Kings County has. So, important to kind of look at it beyond just that total number perspective. And then we touch on again the service disentanglement, specifically around education, policing, and fire, and really all financial contributions for provincially-controlled portfolios. So, for education, we touch on, obviously, the significant amount of funding that municipalities contribute towards that. For Kings County, as you know, it's about 25% of the municipal budget. Policing, we touch on whether there should be potentially a review examining provincial or regional police services. Fire, we obviously feel that, and we're recommending that council identifies really that lack of oversight that's there in what could be termed as antiquated legislation in some areas. And there's no responsibility right now by either the province or the municipality. So, either the province needs to assume that responsibility for services or empower the municipality to have proper control over those services. As the legislation, as you know, talks about may as opposed to shall. So, there's certainly some changes that could happen there to kind of strengthen, I guess, the delivery of those services and have some oversight in governance over it a little bit better. And then the financial contributions for provincially-controlled portfolios, what the CAO referred to, in terms of our mandatory contributions in addition to policing, education, as you know, the net operating losses for housing is a significant one as well. So, there's a lot of contributions that are there that lead to that service entanglement, and we're recommending that that should be disentangled.
Okay. Counselor Killam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Greg. Considerations, I guess, the things I had here for discussion, if it's worthy at all. But fire service in Kings County answer a lot of calls for accidents on provincial highways. And I don't know if, maybe you can tell me if indeed there's any financial refund for those services of the fire, fire service. I'm not aware of any. But I thought that that might be something to plug in, along with the medical calls. It's a health issue. And with that, possibly, the province could consider being, contribute to the very high insurance rates that the fire service has to come up with, the overhaul program. But these issues with, there's a lot of calls on highways to help RCMP to attend accident scenes, ties up a lot of equipment and manpower. And I just thought that that should be a part of the conversation anyway. Leave it at that.
If I can, Deputy Mayor, just to get clarification. So, I would kind of paraphrase, I guess, saying that, you know, fire service extends far beyond the traditional sense of fire services. They offer medical aid, component of it, which gets into that people service
Yes.
side of things. So, some compensation associated with that from provincial level to offset that. Okay?
And the cost, we get a charge for every call that goes out to these accident scenes, and might be good to have a look at that and possibly plug in. scenes, and might be good to have a look at that and possibly plug in a conversation on that. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you, through you, Deputy Mayor. What's, what's missing in the answer, and I don't disagree with it, is, is the local roads. But, the problem with not wanting the province to maintain that is the issue that currently our local roads are in a state of disrepair. And, and any of the services that we might be further disentangling ourselves from, I feel we would be handing over in, in better condition than if we were to be receiving local roads under our responsibilities. So, I think if there should be any maintenance or assumed responsibility from the province, and implying that we're taking on local roads, and I know this wasn't specifically addressed, but there should be some sort of financial upfront to either allow us to bring those roads back to a standard, or a certain number of years where we could ease into it, where the province is contributing a larger share as we exit the other services and enter into the potential new service of local roads.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to councillor, I would propose maybe we just kind of expand a little bit at the last sentence in question two then, and kind of where we give that as an example around local roads, we could insert something around there about condition to kind of address that.
Good. I also noticed that absence in the list. It's suspicious. Anything else on question three? And question four is nice and short, and speaks for itself, but I'll turn it back to you, Director Barr.
Thank you. So, question four just simply is what discretionary expenditures by your municipality does your council believe should be better supported by the province? And we just simply have one sentence recommending that support from the province would not be required if the municipal order of government is appropriately scaled. So, again, keeping with that same theme.
Any thoughts on that piece there? We're good. Councillor Armstrong?
Oh, sorry. So, by appropriately scaled, you're talking about amalgamation?
Regionalization.
Okay. We all call it the same, we all call it a different word, but it's the same concept. It's joining together existing municipal units into a larger one.
The reason I'm not so keen to use the word like amalgamation is because we do feel that-
Nobody likes it.
Well, it, it needs to be provincially led, and we talked about it later on, about the lack of having it done organically. That we just, we're proposing that council consider that if that continues to happen throughout the province, it's just not going to achieve the scale that you need. If it just happens organically between municipal units, that it needs to be a broader approach regionally. So, it, it requires legislation changes, there's a lot involved in that, and we touched on that later on in some of the questions, but it's, it's more comprehensive than just amalgamating individual units. It's a much bigger, broader approach that we think needs to happen. That encompasses, again, counties, towns, districts, villages.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say I completely agree with the statement, and the conciseness of the answer is emphasizing our overall theme in, in response to the survey. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Kellam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a, just a question. With the towns, if we're talking toward a regionalization, are they on board now, or is that something that would probably have to be encouraged by the province to happen?
Through Deputy Mayor to the councillor, we certainly don't contemplate in responses, draft responses for the survey, engagement with the towns currently to get a feel for that. It's not, if the survey questions weren't prepared, kind of with that thought in mind, it was more so what's a high-level kind of governance approach that needs to be taken here from, from the province? And certainly, I mean, for clarity, I mean, it's not proposing that communities disappear, and certainly the individual, you know, Kings County, still be Kings County, Lake Bedford, Still Bedford. It's about the governance side of that, and the taxation, and the economies of scale associated with it, that, you know, when you have 48 municipal units, it makes it very difficult to deal with some of those things that require scale to address them over the long term. So, that's kind of the theme, so.
I understand that, what you're saying, and, you know, regarding it's, the, well, four municipal units within Kings County, basically what we're talking about is that clarification?
In fairness, probably broader than that. Broader than even Kings County and the four units.
Could possibly spread to Annapolis and Hans County?
Annapolis Valley could be a regional.
Annapolis Valley.
We don't go in so far to kind of propose what it would be, but, you know, why not? Something that's more, when you look at, later on, we talked a little bit about, you know, how the regional approaches there from RENs, from tourism, like, there's already that kind of staple within provincial government where they look at things more regionally. I mean, even in their own office at DMA, I mean, they attack things from a regional perspective. So, it's about, you know, whether it be regions, so, you know, South Shore, Southwest Nova, Annapolis Valley, Central, Northern, Cape Breton. I mean, maybe that's the appropriate scale, but it's, it's certainly larger than what it would be when you look at 48 municipal units. So, it's not, it's not trying to be an advocate for amalgamation or one unit with another, or it's, it's that there needs to be a broader approach to this. That's happened in other provincial jurisdictions across our country already, so it's not a, not a new concept, so.
I'm not for or against, I'm just, I know the bottom line will be the tax rate at the end of the day, and that's when the blowback could come. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I can just, one, I'll just reiterate, I mean, these are recommendations from staff for council, so these are for you to own and to be a part of. We're just trying to put some things to paper to kind of initiate that conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor, one way I like looking at it is, is we were to redraw municipalities from scratch today, like, what would we do based on, like, 2022? What does that look like? What makes sense? That's how I kind of like to, beyond Kings County, but like in the province.
I get it.
Yeah. Okay, question five.
All right. So, question five, to provide a sense of priorities, state the three municipal expenditure responsibilities that your municipal council believes should be reviewed, and why? So, as no surprise, probably, is that we've identified education, policing, I guess specifically RCMP, and housing as being the three priorities. And for education, we obviously talk about the significant amount of contributions by the municipality towards people services, that really should be from others, funding sources other than property taxes. Policing, again, reiterating that limited amount of control at the municipal level for policing budgets, and that side of it is, you know, municipality 70/30 split with the province, and it certainly is not aligned with the amount of control and influence. And then we reiterate the, the budget billing component as opposed to the actual officers in, in the field at any given time. And then housing is, again, a theme that's certainly come in front of this council, is condition of housing, and the contributions towards really what are escalating net operating losses, outdated handover agreements, things of that nature with housing. There's certainly, those three areas we feel are, are significant that need review. So, we're proposing those as our response to question five.
Any thoughts on this? Councillor Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was just wondering if you could kind of expand on the outdated handover agreements, what exactly that means, and kind of what it encompasses?
Certainly. Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Councillor Granger. So, the handover agreements originate really from back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. I don't know if there's any in the 90s, but they're, they're very old, and there, there's a lot of confusion about whether they relate to just the term of how long the mortgage may be on the properties associated with, with public housing, and how long those agreements really extend. And certainly, the, the view of many municipal units is that they're only in existence as long as the mortgages exist. And so, there's a lot of discrepancy, and you would have heard it from the presentation from Housing Nova Scotia, where exactly what responsibility is what. And then, when you look, or whose responsibility is, is what with, as it relates to the individual housing units and their age, and then as you look at their policies as it relates to tangible capital assets. They use the provincial guideline in terms of the threshold for tangible capital assets. I think it's $150,000 as part of their tangible capital asset policy. And the handover agreements refer to net operating loss. So, if they're doing any kind of repairs under $150,000, they're expensing those, those repairs instead of having it come into the, the capital side of things for those properties. So, it's causing, you know, as they become older and become in a worse state of condition, and there's a lot of significant repairs that are happening, it's driving up the net operating losses. So, it's just, they need to be revisited. I mean, they're, they're from back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. Certainly, the environment has changed, and I think everybody will agree that the condition of the housing is probably fair to poor for a majority of the, the housing units, and the model in terms of any kind of revenue sharing, apart from it being more of a people service, even though it deals directly with tangible assets, it is really more about a people service. And the fact that we're even involved in that long-term brings into question around the, the alignment of people versus property type services. So, that's what it's kind of referring to, is that the handover agreements just need to be revisited. I mean, they're, they're relying on very old agreements way back when that are really in tune with what the current needs are for the day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Granger. Any other thoughts on this question? Question six. Oh, sorry, Councillor Hurdle. Apologies.
Thank you. Really quick, I think my thoughts on the, answering the second question, not the first, because it was their name, the second question, you, you've bolded the, the point that the, there's no control. So, it's already answered later on in the survey, so it doesn't need to really be addressed differently from what I originally proposed to my suggestions in question two. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six.
All right. Question six, just short, what new service responsibilities would your municipality find unacceptable? So, again, in our proposed response for this, we've identified that, again, reform is really central to this question, and that very clearly we state that any exchange would be unacceptable if it's introduced outside of an exchange that considers a scaled impact of an appropriately sized municipality. And so, it really has to be done looking at, it can't be done, sorry, looking at a non-scaled cumulative, cumulative impact on all 48 municipal units. That certainly, that, that type of non-scaled approach in the past results in inequities between municipal units, and so it has to be looked at broader than that. And then again, we wrap up just by saying that the overarching approach must continue to align with the comments we made earlier about people and property services to the origin of taxation.
Okay. Points coming across. Any comments on question six? I think we're good. Question seven?
And just around six, just to finish up, one of the points there is that we propose that you incorporate the FCI ratios as part of that analysis when you're looking at the potential impact. So, it's an important comment that we wanted to make sure that we include. Question seven. So, this one's a checklist question. The following question provides a list of recent changes to the MGA that have implications for the abilities and responsibilities of municipalities. Using the checklist below, please indicate the discretionary abilities that your council believes are useful for the municipality. So, we're given a, a list of options. We checked off, two, the expanded authority to expand funds, and second, the mandate to establish a municipal code of conduct. So, it, again, it's limited to just a checkbox.
And is that full list in the?
It's in Appendix A.
Yeah, it's in page 38?
Full list. It goes on to talk about, and we touch on this on the next question, so thank you, Deputy Mayor, for mentioning that. I'll read them off. Ability to finance departments that increase accessibility, ability enablement, how to sell land below market value or market price in, in some cases, ability to engage in negotiation for the purpose of increasing affordable housing units, ability to create commercial development districts. So, we talk about the other, the last four in the next question.
Okay. I have no lights on, but I would actually ask that we back up a tiny bit to the previous, your previous, like, addendum to the last question around FCI impacts. I know what FCI's are, but I wonder if you couldn't maybe elaborate a tiny bit, because they're not a commonly talked about thing around the table sometimes, and if you're not in that conversation, but-
Yeah.
For the benefit of the public, and maybe some councillors who may not know what they are.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for throw that in at the last minute. I was referencing my notes, and I forgot to mention that. So, FCI's are the financial condition indicators that the province puts out, that are, are a number of indicators, 13 I believe, that kind of are used as a guide for the financial health of municipalities. So, in addition to those indicators and any other ratios that might be relevant when you're considering any kind of impact of service exchange, certainly examining those, those indicators and others, financial, common financial indicators that may be their ratios, whatnot, would have to be part of that analysis. So, just wanted to make mention that that's a, a good lens to kind of look at when you're establishing scale and the impact of some of the regionalization efforts.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, back to question seven, and I have two lights. Mr. CAO first, and then Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you, Deputy. If I could just go back to question six, just for one moment.
There we go.
I'm just thinking about a, a really good comment that Councillor Kellam made about, you know, it generally comes down to my back pocket and what comes out of my wallet. And I think there are mechanisms to deal with that in terms of area rating, I mean, so you can differentiate the tax rate between urban and rural. But I'll compare and contrast that to question six. What I think Deputy, or I'm sorry, Director Barr is saying is that if you don't scale the individual 48, if you just look at the bottom of the two lists and try to say the total of those costs, that can be very punitive to some municipalities bearing a disproportionate co, a share of the cost. So, and that's what happened in the mid 90s with municipal reform. I can't recall, I think the number was 75 million. So, the cost on both sides of service exchange between the province and municipalities, both had a, not exceed the exact same number. If you go up the list, there were certainly some inequities about who bore what of that share of the 75 million. So, that's the overall suggestion of regionalizing, scale of that, but also then looking at the FCI or the financial ratios of what happens to each of those units, to make sure that there's a equal or an equitable, rather, excuse me, an equitable sharing of those costs between the orders of government.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you, through you. Municipal code of conduct, I, I first read this, and I read it thinking in, in the eyes of a councillor. And I know we have a councillor code of conduct, we have staff codes of conduct, but a municipal code of conduct, I'm now realizing this is an entirely different thing than my first read-through. What do you see as a municipal code of conduct, and why would that be advantageous? And essentially, my understanding of this would be the way municipalities choose to act in relation to province, federal government, other municipalities, or, or maybe, could you explain what you understand municipal code of conduct mean?
I probably would turn to, okay, Deputy CAO, to see if he has a response associated with the municipal code of conduct. I put you on the spot, Rob.
I think in this context, they're still talking about code of conduct as in terms of municipal governments, so councils, which is in process currently. So, unless it has a definite, another definition under the, the survey, I believe it talks about council code of conduct more than anything.
Okay, thank you.
But it's referred to municipal code of conduct.
All right, that makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I have no more lights. Anything else from council on seven? Off to eight then.
All right. So, question eight, what discretionary abilities conferred by the MGA does your municipal government, or municipal council believe are not useful, and why? So, again, we talk about how that many of those four, so I mentioned that the next question, we talk about those four that are remaining, have limited use for most municipalities. And we just, again, reiterate that those four items that are listed there really have limited effectiveness without fiscal capacity. And so, that obviously scales of regional municipalities would be better able to take advantage of those discretionary abilities. So, not that they're not useful, but they're really not useful unless you have appropriate scale to be able to deal with them in appropriate fiscal capacity.
Okay, any comments on that one? Number nine?
Number nine, what additional discretionary abilities does your municipal council believe should be granted by changes to the MGA? So, we are recommending two items to put under this response. One is an improved ability to create partnerships and governance models, and broaden the act so that those partnerships are, are allowed to happen. So, for Kings County specifically, thinking about partnerships that are there for whether it be the VCFN with education institutions, Regional SOR, and obviously the, the partnership that there involves Pepsi, PepsiCo. So, that- So that kind of managing of critical infrastructure, such as wastewater systems, is something that we feel the Act should really encompass, so it's broader than that. Under Section 60, it talks about municipal units and kind of restricts it at that. And then secondly, just to allow one bylaw enactments to be applicable among municipal units, so really one bylaw for multiple municipal units rather than mirrored bylaws, a single bylaw that municipalities can use and enforce. And so again, regional infrastructure associated with Regional SOR, that kind of stuff comes to mind.
Councilor Hurdle?
I'm just looking at this question and realizing Halifax has their own version of the MGA, or I forget what that's called.
HRM Charter.
Yeah, so, so in that sense, I'm wondering if the changes to the MGA may be to also incorporate Halifax underneath the MGA as opposed to having a duplicated governing document.
I believe, just from my conversations at the NSFM table, that that, they are looking at the MGA and the charter. Like, will have to be amended under anything that comes out of service exchange. So I think it's all, it is all happening, and Halifax was asked to fill this out as well, probably. And it may include the charter in their version of the survey, I would expect, but I didn't read it. Thanks, Counselor. Anything else on this particular piece? I especially like the bylaw part. I think that makes sense regardless of whether or not the province takes our advice around regionalization. It'd be a good tool to have. Any, anything else? Okay, I don't see any. Question 10.
Thank you. Question 10 is another checklist question. So using the checklist below, please indicate what, which regulations or responsibilities your municipal council finds to be causing considerable pressure on your budget and capacity to accomplish core goals. So we're recommending two items checked off of the list, and one is the federal wastewater systems effluent regulations, and then the minimum planning requirements for the Coastal Protection Act. So while that's not having a current impact, it's, the impact is still unknown, I believe, at this point, but we felt it would be appropriate to check that off as a potential budgetary impact, depending on how that, how that goes.
Okay, anything on that question? Councilor Killam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Greg. This, the statement of minimum planning requirements Coastal Protection Act, is that sort of falls in line with the climate mitigation and projects that would, would adapt to the future on climate change on, on the coast?
I believe that's probably what they're referring to when they, they list things here. I mean, it's minimum planning requirements, we would have kind of concerns about how that's worded and how, but try to look at just the Coastal Protection Act. Will that, is that regulations that might have impact on municipality? Yes, it may. So that's, that was a thought process in terms of checking it off.
Yeah, I just kind of tweaked, I mean, with respect to getting projects done along the coast, especially our Bay of Bandy coast, there's so many, so a lot of red tape to have to go through to make common sense changes, or if it happens to maybe expand a breakwater or that sort of thing, there's a lot of hoops to go through. To minimize that would be good, I'll put it that way, for getting more things done to protect our coastline. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. I think Mr. Quinn would like to weigh in on this one. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you through, through Deputy Mayor to Councilor Killam. I think there's sort of a, I'm sorry, I'll volunteer to speak for Trish, or she may just pit me over if I go off line here. I think there's just sort of a whole suite of potential impacts of what the coastline protection requirements may or may not entangle in terms of existing infrastructure that there, that there may be sort of, I would say, some push to rethink how some of that goes, but also just where future development can happen in terms of coastline, in terms of, I think, sort of in those two broad buckets as, as well. But I'd say it has potential implications on those two broad areas, and also just sort of some of the environmental protection and buffering that may come along as, as well with it. It's still somewhat of a, in draft form, but there's, just even within those broad buckets, there certainly, there's a lot of avenues that could have impacts that we're really still trying to get our heads around.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Javrec, go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Just to build on Scott's comments, the, I think why Coastal Protection Act was singled out is the fact that it's provincial act. Currently, the regulations are being drafted, and when you look at the draft regulations, everything that the province is proposing is downloading that implementation and enforcement of that act to municipalities. They haven't figured out how, but everything that they're proposing would either be through Land use bylaw or building enforcement, so downloading.
Okay. It's good to put the word to it. Councilor Hurdle?
Thank you again. With responsibilities causing considerable pressure on the budget, that may be a subjective term, given our really good fiscal responsibility, but was there an option to check off the RCMP contract negotiations and back pay? I know that could have a substantial variance in our budget if, if things move one way or another, and with recent news, that may change, but was that an available checklist item?
I can read those off to save Director Barr from doing it. Surplus schools, property valuation assessment services, federal wastewater systems effluent regulations, which we checked, cost of police evidentiary lab analysis services, and I believe that's probably mostly applicable to municipalities that have their own police forces, but I could be wrong. Minimum planning requirements Coastal Protection Act, and upcoming working, worker compensation board premiums for volunteer firefighters were all the checks. So that wasn't on there.
Thank you. I must have missed the checklist list.
It's on 39. It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, a little flipping back and forth. Was there anything else on this particular piece, or did I miss anything, Director Barr? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Question 11.
Question 11 reads, are there any other responsibilities brought about by statutes or regulations not mentioned above that add significant pressure on your budget? So we had five areas that we identified that we put forward. One is in relation to further to the federal wastewater systems effluent regulations. We talked about how there's an overlap and a lack of harmonization with provincial regulations, and it creates really duplicated efforts in some cases. The second bullet, you know, obviously, while it's of critical importance, be remiss to not mention the Accessibility Act, and that it will have significant pressure on municipal budgets, but certainly well needed. The third item was Sections 59 and 60 of the Education Act, in combination with 81-4 of the MGA, which deals with taxation of crown properties, is something that continues to be a challenge, and specifically as it relates to currently regional education centers, and whether they should be appropriately charged for sewer charges, and whether that falls under taxation of crown properties. So there is an ongoing kind of discussion that seems to happen related to those sections of the Act and the legislation with the MGA. And then we touch on about a lack of appropriate scale in municipal governments, sorry, before that, the lack of regulations kind of having an impact. So as opposed to having regulations that are having a budget impact, how the lack of some regulations, and specifically if it relates to renewable energy, really creates a negative impact on municipalities' ability to jump into some of the larger capital initiatives and generate additional sources of revenue besides property taxation. And then the last one, we take the time to kind of talk a little bit about scale again, about how that has a negative impact, both in, you know, whether it be the duplication of resources and the need for provincial guidance on reform. And we actually use an example of, because they use surplus schools in their list of items, certainly wouldn't be as daunting for municipal units that are challenged already to repurpose or demolish those units if they're surplus, if they had the appropriate scale. Certainly very difficult on small municipalities, as well as large, just not to diminish it, but it certainly has a different perspective of possibly not being as much of an anchor as what they, they could be. So that's, that's the proposed responses under question 11.
Councilor Meisner?
I just wanted to highlight too, I really like that you added in the Accessibility Act here, because it is something that we've talked about a bit at JAC. When we talk about becoming accessible by 2030, there's a huge infrastructure overhaul that needs to happen, and with the multi-levels of government, there's a lot of entanglement there as well, because if you think about all of the bridges that have been built way before, they are completely inaccessible. So that will have quite a significant pressure on our budget, but also on our ability to even move forward and say that we are fully accessible as they want us to be, because it's not all in our purview to make that happen. So just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you. Anything else on this particular one? Okay, question 12.
Right, question 12, we decided to weigh in on this anyway, but it says, if your county or district municipality elects a warden, please indicate whether, in the opinion of your municipal council, the warden system should be replaced by the mayoral system. So we took the time just to add a couple of points there, saying that our municipality replaced the warden system several years ago, the outcome's been positive, and to say that it really enables leadership to be decided by the voters, rather than having it be one of the first decisions that the new council has to wrestle with, and potential of creating divisions within that newly elected body in terms of alliances for a warden. So we just thought we'd, we'd weigh in on that, even though we didn't really apply to their intended audience, I think.
I think it's good to share our experiences that we've had. Councilor Hurdle?
Unrelated to this question or the subject, I would move that we go to break shortly.
Oh, you beat me to it. And I, Councilor, my flashlight just went off. I was going to say, once we finish this question, we could take a break. Do you have anything else to add? Okay, we'll recess for 15? Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the recommendation to go on break because I think it was well-deserved. So, we are calling the meeting back to order. We are back in session, and we are on page 45 of our agenda package today. Item 6C, the Service Exchange renegotiation and MGA review. We're reviewing the questions that the municipality is submitting to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities regarding service exchange in general and the upcoming conversations with the province. And Director Byer has been doing a fabulous job leading us through staff's proposed responses, and council have been giving their input. So, we will continue this process with question 13.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, continuing on, question 13 reads, village governance is established in Part 17 of the MGA. In the view of your municipality, should villages be consolidated with districts and counties? Please explain why or why not. So, in our response to this, we focused, obviously, outside of just looking at villages and would clearly say that fiscal capacity is really only able to be achieved through consolidation of not only villages, no need to kind of separate them, but all municipal bodies, including towns, districts, and counties. So, we're talking about a much broader regionalization than just looking at villages or towns or any other units. And then we talk a little bit here in our proposed response that in excess of municipal units does create redundancies, can be frustrating, and frustrates the ability to operate efficiently at all levels, whether it be federal, provincial, and municipal, because of the volume of municipal units within the province that need to be engaged for any type of undertaking or initiative. So, the bigger thing, though, is that we state that villages, like all municipal units, can be challenged logistically, and many are, and if not all of them are, logistically and financially due to the lack of scale. And then we go on to talk about how the impact of professional and accredited staffing resources certainly are an issue. So, we're talking about accountants, engineers, planning, building inspectors, planners, rather. All of those are very challenged resources, and certainly through a regionalization approach we would address some of those. And then, you know, obviously, to continue with the scale discussion and the fiscal capacity, many municipal units don't have that required scale to create and maintain adequate asset management plans and their critical infrastructure. So, again, with the same theme, scale is important in order to achieve all of the desired outcomes as it relates to that type of stuff in terms of managing infrastructure. And they don't have the ability to be able to respond, in a lot of cases, to demands that might be placed on them. We throw out the example of construction of new housing units, very difficult to be in a position to be able to respond to that if you don't have the scale to be able to expand or improve or maintain your critical infrastructure to accommodate that type of growth. So, that's kind of our proposed response to that, is to continue with that viewpoint that a regionalized approach is the best way for a municipal future.
Okay, Council Ranger.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Of course, I've heard from both Canning and Port Williams about this. They wanted to know, they specifically went to this question, they kind of wanted to know about what would be the consultation with them about this particular item. They kind of wanted to know about what would be the consultation with them about this particular item.
Ranger, we're certainly not proposing that this would be led by the municipality. We're responding to this to really advocate, hopefully the council would advocate the province in terms of taking that leadership role. So undoubtedly, there would have to be some form of engagement with, whether it be villages, towns, or districts, or counties, or, I mean, everybody, to discuss whatever approach that hopefully they would look at from a regional perspective. But within this, it's not something that's being proposed to be driven by the municipality at all. It's something that would be done at the provincial level and that we just are... And what we're proposing here for council's approval is that it's very inclusive. It's, you know, it's kind of unfair, I guess, when you look at it from the perspective that we're trying to take, which is probably broader than other respondents may have, is that it's a regional approach. So we just felt this question to kind of drill down to the village level wasn't at all in line with what we were proposing in terms of that common theme of a regionalization. So, but to answer your question, yeah, it would be something that would have to be done at the provincial level if this is ever going to take shape.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Armstrong.
I also had phone calls from, emails from the villages that are within my district. I have three of them. And I think the thing that was a common theme was the fact that they weren't consulted in any way about this response. And because this response technically is coming from this council, even though these words are coming from staff, eventually we must put our name on these. So they are coming to me and saying, "Why are you doing this? Like, why are you basically throwing us under the bus? Why are you, I mean, you didn't ask us any questions, you didn't come to us in any kind of consultation." And although I made the reference at the beginning of when I asked you about regional cooperation, amalgamation, whatever you want to call it, and said it was an underlying theme, I think we've reached a point where we can see that this, it's not underlying. It is the main theme of this particular document. And I'm having a really hard time to justify this to the villages because they feel that it came out of the blue. And that they, you know, if you're going to answer a question that has to do with them and they exist within our municipality, I think that you should have at least spoken to them. You know, I think that the, there are villages out there, whether they be in Kings County or any place, that are struggling. I think that some of the villages within our boundaries are struggling, but that's not necessarily the case with all of them. And I think that you did a disservice to the ones that are not struggling and feel that they're doing a good job for their residents in their village. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Would you like any kind of response? I can offer one.
I mean, I would say that I don't think this is a, just from my perspective, I didn't write it, but I don't think that this is a comment on whether or not villages are successful or valued or, you know... Hold on. I'll stop before I put my foot in my mouth. I'll look to the CAO and then Counselor Armstrong, if you wish to keep going.
Thank you Deputy. I'm not trying to deflect here, but as you recall from a prior meeting, the NSF, we, the council, a couple of meetings ago, said they didn't have sufficient time to respond to a deadline of the NSFM. So we're really working under an NSFM-sponsored survey and an NSFM deadline. So that in part is where we find ourselves. So maybe unfortunate, but that's where we are. To my understanding, the majority of the municipalities have already responded.
Yes.
We're past the deadline that the NSFM had imposed.
Definitely.
So that's, from a time perspective, that's where we find ourselves.
Director Byer.
Just further that, I'll just say, you know, it's unfortunate that the question is worded in a way that it is, and it's coming from NSFM. I mean, the audience is NSFM and the committee. Not a survey put out by the province, not a survey question set this municipality generated. It's in response to the questions that were put forward. So yes, there's a common theme there from the regionalization point of view. It's unfortunate this question is worded in such a way that they're asking specifically around villages because our response certainly extends much broader than villages and encompasses the municipality itself and all across the province. So it's, we tried to structure our response that way to not, you know, pardon the words, but not to pick on the villages or any other municipal unit. We're talking about a much broader kind of approach at the provincial level. But it is unfortunate the question kind of zeroes in on villages.
Counselor Armstrong.
So perhaps I can ask for a little bit of clarification. SERMGA put this out from NSFM. So these aren't questions that the province is necessarily asking. For some reason, NSFM thinks that these are valid questions to ask and have the answers to, to go into the provincial, the negotiations or whatever, even though NSFM is only in an advisory capacity. So it's NSFM that's asking these questions, not the province.
Yeah, through you Deputy Mayor to Counselor Armstrong, that's correct. So NSFM has formulated this survey to gauge the opinions of municipal councils across the province with presumably not really any discussion yet with the problem associated with this. These are the questions that NSFM and that specifically that subcommittee has generated.
Okay, so further clarification. SERMGA is only in an advisory capacity. So who is actually negotiating the service exchange agreement when it comes to time to make those changes?
So through you Deputy Mayor as well to Counselor. Question twenty is where we touch on that topic as well because while the terms of reference, they don't specifically talk about the committee being a negotiating committee. It's entitled as being a renegotiation committee. And the terms of reference really feel like it's a negotiating committee. And so in section twenty, we go so far as to talk about the appropriateness of that.
I saw your references to NSFM and AMN.
So to answer your question, you know, it feels as if this is kind of lining up to be the negotiating committee for NSFM and presumably on behalf of the municipalities. And we have some recommendations that we're hoping council will consider about that not necessarily being the case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Counselor. Good questions. Counselor Killam.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I guess maybe a comment. I'm not sure how to word this, so I don't cause any problems. Well, I'm finding in what I'm hearing and I'm seeing that possibly we as a municipality have to be more careful with respect to appearing to be high-handed in certain decisions we make. I live in a rural area, as do everybody here probably do. And in that rural area, there's an extreme amount of pride in what they do. And they're very protective of their communities. And I just, I hear this a lot, that that gap between what we do here as a municipality and what goes on out there is maybe widening instead of coming together to go forward in a very collaborative way that doesn't rock the boat. And I don't mind rocking a boat, but I just kind of concern as to some of the things that I see and hear. And I'm not saying this to accuse anybody of anything. It's sort of a bigger than all of us, but I...
Definitely caution you. I'll give you a, I'll just interrupt you and just caution you that you're not being accusatory towards your fellow counselors or towards staff.
I'm not.
Well, you can say that you're not, but if your words demonstrate that you are, then I would suggest you amend your words.
Well, I'm not. I'm talking about as a whole, not as individual staff or us as counselors. I just want to tell you that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm sensing, and I'm hoping that we go forward in a very positive way and we can work together. That's all I'm trying to say.
And there are ways in which you can be self-reflective and critical of our work without assigning intention or maliciousness, which I think is where you were headed. So I would just caution you not...
I'm not being malicious Deputy Mayor.
I'm not saying you're being malicious, but if you're accusing others of acting in that way, then I suggest you just rein in your words.
I'm just looking for a way.
Yeah, I think the main point of, the gist of what you're saying, I think, is important. But the way in which you say it is important as well.
I'm trying. Thank you.
We're all trying. Thanks Counselor.
I know.
All right. Anything else on question thirteen? We'll move to fourteen. Go ahead Director Byer.
Fourteen continues with a consolidation discussion. So, "Under what conditions does your council believe municipal consolidation is advisable? Reasons could include fiscal insolvency, limited access to qualified personnel, infrequency of competitive elections, or an effort to decrease costs." So in our proposed response, staff have suggested stating that, you know, all the reasons that were outlined in the question are valid. But then we reiterate as well, saying that consolidation alone won't achieve the scale that's required in order to achieve the fiscal capacities for municipalities to thrive, let alone continue to maintain their core services. And then we very specifically state that we feel that consolidation should not happen organically, that it needs to be a province-wide regional governance model to ensure, is required to achieve the appropriate scales of economy, economies of scale rather. And so when we say that regionalization, again, in the next part, we talk about it provides a broader approach and just consolidation or amalgamation is in the preamble to the question. And we talk again about how provincial leadership is needed. But we also bring note that legislative changes are needed. The Present Day Act under section three seventy-two-one of the MGA really only contemplates municipalities within a geographic county. So it doesn't permit the kind of regionalization model that we're proposing. And then we go on to talk too that it would resolve a lot of the resource issues that are kind of outlined as one of the items within the question itself. And then this is where we kind of talk a little bit about, from the regionalization point of view, it really would align better with the provincial regional service delivery side of things. And we use examples, I talked before about some of the, you know, rent or things of that nature, but certainly the health, the health authorities, the Centers for Education, they all have a very regional approach associated with them, and whether it be Remo. I mean, there's all kinds of things that have a very regional approach at the provincial level. And really that it's talking about aligning those a little bit better with what's already there from the provincial side of things and to really reduce the number of municipal units that have to be engaged and hopefully bring about some efficiencies as well. So it's kind of just expanding on a little bit to get away from necessarily which method is the right way and kind of focus on the regionalization side of things.
Any thoughts on that particular item? Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And the questions thirteen to fourteen are leading towards a consolidation approach. And looking at the resolutions of the NSFM, it's a resolution to enable municipal modernization. So that may provide some information for those who are concerned about the villages and others who are concerned that these are questions leading towards a conclusion. So the NSFM does have the resolution to modernize municipalities, and therefore these questions do make sense in that context. I don't have any real commentary on our answer for question fourteen, but that clarity may provide some reassurance to the villages that this is not an agenda driven by our municipality.
I think that's extremely important. Thank you Counselor Hurdle. Counselor Armstrong.
I just wondered, one of the things that I think that we here in Kings County take a certain amount of pride on is that we are, you know, we're redoing our IMSAs, and we're working with a group of municipalities that make up towns. We're working with Annapolis County on, you know, Kings Transit and Valley Waste. So we are working collaboratively beyond our borders with other municipalities in that way. So would that be a way forward without going a full amalgamation? But being able to work together in specific areas without, like, you know what I mean? Like, instead of making it the whole enchilada, just taking out the bits that maybe are the most costly? You know, working with an IMSA for, you know, expanded sewer across borders and stuff like that. I know that down in Annapolis County, Annapolis Royal and Annapolis County share sewers, and we in Kentville share sewers and New Minus and all that stuff. So, you know, is there an opportunity there to at least do it on a smaller scale before we jumped into, you know, just to put that option out there that maybe other municipalities could look at something like that as well? And it would be a jumping off point. It would be an opportunity to work with them on a smaller scale and see how well you work together, and then see, possibly see opportunities to move in other directions, and then eventually move into a full amalgamation. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Thanks Counselor. Anything further on fifteen? Probably fifteen or fourteen? Fifteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. They're pretty similar. We're talking about the same things. Okay, well, we'll move into fifteen.
All right, so the next question that the committee put forward for response from councils deals with incentives. And it states, "What incentives could be in place to make amalgamation a viable option?" So our proposed response is to simply state that provincial leadership or regionalization, really there would be minimal need for incentives under that kind of scale restructuring for the municipal units. And we do state though, that certainly when you look at that type of regionalization, there undoubtedly would probably be a financial impairment related to the municipal infrastructure of potentially regionalized municipalities. So certainly provincial contributions towards that to kind of help... The word incentive is probably not the right way, but to really kind of help that transition so that newly formed regional municipality wouldn't be burdened by any kind of lack of asset management or financial planning by prior units would have to be something that would look at. Every municipal unit, regional unit would obviously vary, but those could be significant hurdles associated with a regionalization. So that's something we just wanted to highlight in our response, that financial impairment need to be examined.
Any thoughts on this one? I had just a slight thought when I read the question about, you know, incentives. I'm trying to imagine what would have happened in New Brunswick, who are, is a province that's undertaking municipal reform on a pretty large scale. Looks much different than our municipal landscape here, but still is, you know, they're taking that high-level approach to looking at municipal government as a whole in their province. And I'm just trying to imagine, like, what if, instead of going through that process, they'd offered incentives for, you know, St. John and Quizpampasis and Kennedy Cases Valley to amalgamate? And the different result of what that would achieve? So I think that our answer speaks to that pretty well, that, you know, incentives, if we're looking for like a piecemeal bit by bit without an overarching vision of what municipal government should and needs to be in Nova Scotia, then this is great. But if, you know, when I think of the theme of this is, is if we're looking at a philosophy around what it is that we're here to do as municipal units based on the property tax that we collect, there's a better way. I think that's what our answer is saying, but...
You're hitting it exactly there in terms of if we're looking at it from the lens of just amalgamation and organic, incentives are a component of that. And to your point exactly, it's that, you know, we're talking about more of a provincial leadership or a regionalization, therefore no incentives. It's direction that's really coming from the province.
Anything further? Okay, question sixteen.
Question sixteen reads, "Ministerialities can be supported in fulfilling all responsibilities with new or expanded sources of revenue. What new or expanded sources of revenue, revenue sources or tools does your municipal council believe to be the most viable?" So in our proposed, sorry for, I was used to Rob changing these and get spoiled, I think. So our proposed responses deal with expanded revenues and really cost avoidance is something that can be achieved through regionalization, through efficiencies that would be able to... be able to achieve. And certainly municipalities, again, we talked about the infrastructure that's near end of its useful life, can be adequately addressed really through regionalization. And then we talked a little bit about regionally-scaled decarbonization projects. So, there's been studies in the past that talk about how net-zero emissions can really only be achieved through a larger regional-scale approach. So, certainly, we see opportunities there if there is that regionalization, and certainly being able to not only achieve those targets, but to identify potentially new sources of, of revenue for municipal units.
Any thoughts on this piece? Counselor Killen?
Just, I guess, a question. Are we in a bad way in the municipality compared to other areas? I, I guess I look over the years that Kings County's always been maybe a leader in many things, and I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if we're heading, is, I guess the question comes up, is big or better, and/or is small still, a small is beautiful, is still a, a, something to consider, or somewhere in the middle? I, I just wonder where we're going. And I'm, I'm very open to hearing all the, all the debate and all that. I'm not a for or against anything at this point, but I just wanna, I just don't want to lose our community contacts and how, how we've sort of done that over the years. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hurdle?
I'm just looking at that, this, and sometimes there can be a, a confusion of, of community and community organizations and spirit that sometimes gets applied to the municipal units. And, and that doesn't have to change. Liverpool was a town. They are no longer a town, and they are still Liverpool. Municipal entities, as they change, they don't need to dissolve the community-mindedness. The community's still there. The people are still there. And, and I, I feel I needed to emphasize this point because it, it hadn't yet been addressed in this discussion, but the, the people are still going to be there and, and doing the same things that they do to gather together the spirit. You're still going to see things like the murals that they have in Kentville or, or Berwick. Those are community-driven and not necessarily requirements of the town or the municipal unit. And so, that oftentimes gets lost in this argument and confused in this argument, where the, the governments and the efficiency of a larger yet smaller, in effect, government, those efficiencies are, are oftentimes seen as trying to take away that community. But it's, I, I don't feel like that's what is being suggested in, in any of these answers.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle. Anything further on the response to this question? And seeing none, we can move to seventeen.
Seventeen states, what grants has your municipality received for operational expenses, and how could these grants be improved? So, we've simply just listed off operational grants that have been received, aligning whether they were federal, provincial, or both. And offers a few comments in terms of how some administrative changes could be made, some improvements, how improvements could be made with some enhanced timelines or better timelines for some of the, the grants process. And then offered up a few commentaries, just from recreation staff, about the lack of funding for seniors programming and active transportation, and then also examining the farmland grant, its valuation and its logic for rate determination. So, looking at a revised approach associated with that. Again, I apologize for, for getting to move the slide deck.
Okay. Relatively straightforward. Any comments from council? Question eighteen, go ahead.
Eighteen, similar, gets into questions around capital grants. So, what grants has your municipality received for capital expenses, and how could these grants be improved? So, again, we've listed off capital grants that the municipality has received, whether they're federal, provincial, through FCM. And we speak a little bit about some of the administrative changes that could, could happen to improve those, the grant process associated with that.
Any comments? Okay, nineteen?
So, nineteen is special considerations. It reads, is there anything about your municipality that your council believes deserves special consideration in terms of expenditure responsibilities, legislation, or financial support? So, this is where we're proposing, and again, we mentioned this earlier on, to examine individual municipal impact when making any kind of service exchange alignment or renegotiation, so that they, not all items affect municipalities equally. So, to examine the impact at each individual municipal unit, and to really use, again, the financial condition indicators or other ratios as needed to kind of project what that impact would be on any kind of regionalization. So, we thought this was a good point to kind of mention that, and we use the example of J-class roads in this one as well because of the impact on Kings County.
Okay. Okay. I don't see any lights on this particular question, which leads us to our last question, twenty. We're getting kicked out. The lights are going off. Question twenty, is there anything else we'd like to share?
So, yeah, number twenty is just anything else that your municipal council would like to share. And there's really three points that we're proposing in here, and this is kind of a catch-all way for us to, to hopefully see council speak about a couple of things. And one of them is the committee itself, and how our commentary in there that we're proposing is that the committee should not serve as a negotiating body, that it should be, the province should really appoint an arms-length expert panel to develop and table recommendations, and certainly do it in consultation with NSFM. But we wanted to take an opportunity to kind of clarify and, and provide a, a position in relation to this committee. And I think it's important to kind of, actually, I'll, I'll go down to the second one first before I add some more commentary on that. So, the second point is that concerned about how council and senior staff are really engaged on provincial policy, and that really the, the province appears to be kind of stepping away from the traditional wider discussion paper approaches and relying more on NSFM and AMA to develop really provincial policy. And kind of creates a situation where if the legitimacy or appropriateness of the program or response from the province could simply be, you know, well, that's what was requested from NSM, NSFM or AMA. So, certainly the roles there are, in our opinion, being a little bit blurred, and feel that it's, this is an appropriate point to kind of, to raise that. And then, you know, kind of in line with that, that I was going to touch on after the first point, is just that when you look at the committee composition itself, you know, it's, it's made up of representatives from various municipalities, whether it be elected or whether it be administrative. And we just feel that this arms-length expert panel would kind of provide a perspective that, and it's not to say that any committee members are necessarily biased, but certainly it eliminates the potential of that if you're having an arms-length review from a regionalization point of view. And then our last comment, it's just to kind of mention that even when you look at some of the regional efforts that are happening now, or activities that are happening now, there's challenges from a fiscal capacity point of view to make those effective. So, when you're looking at the inequities that sometimes are there from an intermunicipal point of view, regional efforts sometimes are very successful, other times successful despite perhaps the full, you know, keep it at, you know, funding or financial point of view may not be there by each of the individual municipal units. So, that intermunicipal funding inequities is certainly there as it relates to some regional efforts that would obviously be eliminated through kind of a regionalization approach as well. So, those are kind of the three areas in the, in the catch-all. Anything else that we were proposing from staff or council to submit?
Okay. Any thoughts on the three proposed bullet points? Okay. Concluding comments and recommendation?
Yeah, I've probably spoken way too much already, so I probably won't offer any concluding comments other than, you know, perhaps this would be, the recommendation might want to be amended to say, recommend appendix B as amended, and we'll go back with some of the comments that have been provided here from council and amend it with markup so that you can see it, and then it would come to council on July twenty-sixth for further consideration.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion. And our CIO, you, you're going to give them from here? Okay?
Thank you, Deputy. When the directors and Deputy Frost and myself were assembling this, at the end of the day, I sort of sat there and said, oh, what, what is the most important takeaway from these twenty questions? And I listened intently to the discussion here this morning. I guess the final comment I would make is more about process. I know we've talked about it, but there is confusion. So, if we, if, you know, our mayor has asked specifically the NSFM if the committee is a negotiating committee, and was told it's not a negotiating committee, yet there were negotiations in the title. Are they, whose questions are they, we heard this morning? Those types of things. So, it's very difficult to achieve consensus among forty-eight units, and there is some confusion. So, in my estimation, for what it's worth, I think one of the lead responses from this municipal unit could be related to process. And I think the process would be best served by an independent panel of experts. I mean, having the right information out during break, Counselor Killen and I were discussing sort of the whole litany of reform initiatives since the mid nineteen nineties. And there was one, there was one where it actually went up to the, it went to the Supreme Court and then the Court of Appeal about certain elements of that. And it was largely shaped by information or misinformation that was put out and internalized by the public. So, I think it's really important to have a straightforward process, and people know what's going on and who's handling it. So, my lead takeaway for your consideration would be an independent panel to administer this process. Thank you.
Any questions for the CIO on what his, his comments were, or clarification required? Counselor Armstrong?
No, I agree wholeheartedly with the CIO. I do believe that an independent panel is the one that should be doing, dealing with this, so there's no even hint of bias or anything like that. So, I agree with that. The only question that I was going to ask is you're going to take our comments today away and amend, you know, make some changes to what we have in front of us. Will we have that before July twenty-sixth? And the only reason I ask is, is of course, I'd like to see it, but I'm sure Counselor Windsor would like to see it, because unless he listens or watches, he's not going to know what we've said. So, and, and possibly the mayor as well. But I think that they should have a little bit of lead time on it, just to see where, what was put forward, what changes we've asked to be made, and not have to be, you know, reading it on the twenty-sixth while we're trying to go through a public hearing and, you know, all of that other stuff. So, if we could have it even, you know, Friday, would be nice. So, thank you.
Our CIO has his light on as well.
Thank you, Deputy. I was just going to chime in in response to Counselor Armstrong. Absolutely. We've taken some notes, and we'll amend that and get it out as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Anything else? Oh, Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank our CIO for presenting this to us in this format, where there's a healthy discussion and dialogue on these questions and answers, because I, I do feel it's, it's good for council to discuss this in a public forum and have that opportunity to bring up points and, and have that back and forth, and the encouragement for that engagement, I feel was, is, is important as well. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Good point, Counselor. Director Barr? All good? All good? Okay. Run for the hills. Recommendation. The Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the proposed responses as amended to, based on the discussion of Committee of the Whole, to the Service Exchange Renegotiation and MGA Review Committee Membership Survey, as provided in appendix B of the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two request for decision. Do I have a mover of the motion? Moved by Counselor Harding, seconded by Counselor Allen, with lots of other hands around the table. Discussion on the recommended motion. Seeing none, all in favor or against, please signify now. And to echo Counselor Hurdle, thank you to staff, and thank you to all of you for your insightful probing and inquisitive questions this morning. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously, and we now have moved on to item seven, Financial Services. Seven A is approval of West Hans Regional Municipality's capital budget for Hansport Fire Department and approval of the Hans border fire area rate. And we have Mr. Scott McKay with us this morning. It is still the morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lutz and, and council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Today, I'm going to speak about the proposed capital budget for the Hansport, Hansport Fire Department, and subsequently of the recommended fire area rate for residents of Kings County who are serviced by the Hansport Fire Department. So, specifically, the recommendations before you today are that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the capital budget for the Hansport Fire Department as submitted by the West Hans Regional Municipality for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year per appendix A attached to the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two request for decision, and that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the levying, collection, and remittance of the fire area rate for the Hans border area at a rate of zero point one zero one seven per hundred dollars assessment, per appendix B attached to the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two request for decision. So, each year, the West Hans Regional Municipality submits to staff here at the County of Kings a budget for the capital needs of the Hansport Fire Department. This department provides fire services for Kings County residents in, in Hans border, Lockhartville, Avonport, Bishopville, West Brooklyn, Greenfield, and Black River Lake. As has been the case, the residents of the municipality of the County of Kings in the aforementioned areas are responsible for that portion of the capital cost reflected by the percentage of fire calls which bring the Hansport Fire Department into Kings County. Currently, that percentage of calls is twenty-nine and a half percent, calculated as a running three-year average. These expenses are then collected from the residents through an area rate, which is set annually by municipal council and collected through the September tax bills. Looking at the detail, and I apologize for the size of this, but looking at the detail of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I'll observe the following. Truck number two, with the cost of twenty-nine thousand four hundred twelve dollars annually, will be fully paid for in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Truck number six, costing twenty-one thousand five fifty-one annually, will be fully paid for in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The breathing apparatus costs eighteen four hundred, eighteen thousand four hundred one annually, and will be fully paid for in the next year. The command scene lighting equipment costs of thirty-one hundred and forty-four dollars annually will be fully paid for in twenty thirty-one, thirty-two. Maxi-force airbags costing a thousand twenty-five annually will be fully paid for in twenty thirty-six, thirty-seven. And the fire hall study costs of ten thousand one hundred five dollars are fully paid for in this coming, coming year. There is new scuba equipment costing five thousand three hundred forty-three dollars annually to be paid for over the next five years, and a new quint fire truck costing a hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars annually to be paid for over the next fifteen years, for a total capital budget, subtotal of two hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars. On top of that, we add the administration fee of four percent, as well as applicable HST, as you see on the budget. And the cost of the fire hall, which we've talked about over the last couple of years, is, it's a little unique in terms of how we cost it. We are paying our full proportion or portion of the, the cost of this to the Regional Municipality of West Hans upfront, and then we'll collect the amount back from our residents over the next twenty-five years. Since we're essentially reimbursing ourselves, we're not going to charge a four percent administration fee on top of that. It is just a straight, straight cost. So, the principal component of that annually is forty-two thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars. Interest will be calculated as that amount which was lost for not having been on deposit with the bank, and so this will be a trailing calculation which will begin next year. In the end, there is a need to recover, as you can see at the bottom of that page, of a hundred and eleven thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars. So, the area rate then is calculated by taking that figure of a hundred and eleven thousand six eighty-three, dividing it by the assessment base, which assessment base, which this year in the Hans border area is just a little under $110 million. It's $109,849,400. And dividing that by 100 to pinpoint the rate per $100 of assessment. And that rate is 10.17 cents per $100 of assessment this coming year as proposed. By comparison, this area will, this year have the highest area rate across the county, closely followed by Canning at 9 cents and Berwick at 8. It should be noted that the last year, the Hans border area's area rate was 2.6 cents. So it is a bit of a jump this year. And as, as an example to show you what that means for somebody with $150,000 property, last year, the rate of 2.6 cents came out to $39 per year. This year, we're looking at $152.55 per year as a fire area rate for these, for these residents. So as in the past, we advertised and held a public meeting with residents in the area, but unfortunately, it was not well attended. This year, only three local residents showed up to our meeting, disappointingly. At, at the outcome, at the end, we did have a vote to gauge support from those at least that did show, and two were in favor of the rate and one was opposed to it. So one thing I will let you know is that as an alternative to the proposed rate of 10.17 cents, council could subsidize a portion of the area rate from the general rate as well. And for every cent that we would have to reduce the, the area rate proposed, council would need to subsidize that by $10,982. So once again, the recommendations before you today are, first of all, that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the capital budget of the Hansport Fire Department as submitted by the West Hans Regional Municipality for the 2022-23 fiscal year per Appendix A attached to the July 19th, 2022 Request for Decision. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the levying, collection and remittance of the fire area rate for Hans border area at a rate of .1017 per $100 assessment per Appendix B attached to the July 19th, 2022 Request for Decision. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKay. I have several lights on. We'll start with Counsel Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. I picked up on it being the highest area rate and so it brought me some questions. What are the key factors to why they would be the highest? Is it the, a lower assessment rate? What are the key factors essentially?
Mayor, two, two things that come into play here. One is the assessment base of $109,000, or $109 million. Might be a little smaller than, you know, if we're looking, Kentville's, for example, is a little over $900 million. So if we start to compare those two, that's a, a big factor. This year, as you see that there's a big increase, there are two significant items that now begin to get paid. One is the, the fire hall, which was in a state that needed to be, to be replaced. They had trouble even fitting the existing trucks into, into the existing fire hall, and it is just about complete. And secondly, the, the new fire truck is a significant purchase for, for the West Hans Regional Municipality and the Hansport Fire Department. But again, these are assets that were in, in need of replacement and unfortunately, the timing meant that this, this time, the cycle is that they are a little higher than the other, other, or other fire departments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Granger and then Counsel Kilam.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was just wondering, in the assessment for the serviced areas, is that commercial, residential, institutional and industrial?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. That is made up of residential, commercial and resource properties across, across that area.
So that's it? So the assessment for institutional and industrial?
That would come in as commercial. So pretty much, pretty much everything that's.
And I also kind of wanted to know, why was the engagement so low with the public? Was it just poor timing or?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, it's, it's a challenge. The last time that we held a face-to-face meeting out there, we had 57, 55 participants in the room, so quite delighted with that. But some of the other fire departments that are reporting back to me in terms of their area rate, vote results and, and engagement, Waterville, I'll use as an example, they have about 1,700 properties that fall under their outside area rate, and they didn't have a soul that showed up, unfortunately, to theirs. And it's just not uncommon. Most of what I looked at were single-digit participants in their, in their meetings. So it might be time to look at the way we're engaging.
Well, surprising. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kilam, followed by Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Scott. So what I'm seeing up there, that the residential increase for folks in that area is about $150 bucks a year? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
On a, through, through, through you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, on a $150,000 home.
On a 50, yes.
Yeah, it would have jumped about $112, $113 per year. So it's about a fourfold.
And, and how does it apply with the commercial?
Same. It is, it is, it is a flat rate or a, the rate of 10.17 cents is against the assessment base of each property. So $500,000 property versus $100,000 property would be a relative difference.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to mention, the addition of the new fire truck added about 4 cents to that area rate. So a combination of the two was kind of poor timing. It would have taken it back down to 6 without the area, or the addition of the new truck. I attended that meeting and there were only three people, ratepayers, that showed up, which was kind of disappointing. We did a lot of advertising, putting up signs and, and the internet, just couldn't get them to come out. But I, I did want to mention one thing, if it's okay, Deputy Mayor.
Of course.
We had two staff members, Greg Barr and Scott McKay, conducted that meeting, and their presentations were exceptional. Basically, anytime you can have two people convince ratepayers to pay that much of an increase, you're doing something exceptional. So I just want to give them credit for that, conducting that meeting. It was well done. Thank you.
Well noted. Thank you so much, Counsel Allen. I have no more lights. Mr. McKay, moving to the recommendations? Yeah? Okay. So we've got two motions ahead of us. The first, that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the capital budget of the Hansport Fire Department as submitted by the West Hans Regional Municipality for the 2022-23 fiscal year per Appendix A attached to the July 19th, 2022 Request for Decision. Do I have a mover of the motion? Moved by Counsel Granger, seconded by Counsel Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much. And the second motion reads, the Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council approve the levying, collection and remittance of the fire area rate for the Hans border area at a rate of $0.1017 per $100 assessment per Appendix B attached to the July 19th, 2022 Request for Decision. Move a mover? Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel Meisner. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify now. And I do believe you're sticking with us, Mr. McKay. So don't run away quite yet, Counsel Hurdle. Just come to you once the vote, motion carried unanimously. Counsel Hurdle?
Should there be reconsiderations for the members of the community to voice their thoughts, would they be able to come to our, our council meeting that this would be recommended to? This is a rhetorical question, I guess, because of course they can, but I thought I might put that out there just in case, since we are recommending it, yet it's not passed.
Yeah, that's an interesting point to float out into the ether. So we'll see if anything happens with it. Thank you, Counselor. Okay. We're moving on to 7B, 2022-23 area rate levies for fire and recreation. Back to you, Mr. McKay.
Thank you again. So the next recommendation before you is that municipal, that municipal, Committee of the Whole recommend that municipal council approve the levying, collection and remittance of area rates as shown in Appendix A, area rates 2022-23, and approve the 4% administration fee charged against the area rates collected in Appendix B, area rates for fire commissions 2022-23, as attached to the July 19th, 2022 Committee of the Whole agenda. So Appendix A makes reference to the following types of rates. Fire area rates that are requested by fire departments, the fire protection area rates or hydrant rates set with the UARB, as well as the recreation area rates. Annually, municipal council must approve the levying, collection and remittance of these various area rates. The fire departments listed in Appendix A must apply annually and have several duties that must be fulfilled as part of Policy Finance 05007. In the event that the department is administered or owned by a commission, direction can be provided by the commission. This also goes for recreation groups in terms of having the, the obligation of, of following a few duties listed in that policy. Appendix B references the requested rates from the various fire commissions across the county. For the fire commissions, they follow the Rural Fire District Act and have a different set of requirements that they follow. And for our purposes, they simply inform us of the approved area rate for the coming year. We collect it on their behalf and remit it back to them. As with all area rates, we will have charged them a 4% administration fee. With respect to fire and recreation area rates, as part of their annual requests, these organizations, as I had mentioned, have certain obligations. They hold an annual public meeting with disclosure of and voting on the proposed area rates. Their incorporation must be in good standing. Prior year's financial statements should be provided. A budget must be submitted annually. And they must provide a clear definition as to the area to which the levy in question In terms of the financial impact of these area rates, we raise almost $2 million through our fire area rates for capital needs of the fire departments and commissions, more than a half a million in hydrant rates, and then approximately $115,000 to $116,000 for recreation services across the county. As far as implementation is concerned, we collect all of these fees on the fall tax bills and remit the collected funds to the entities as requested and of course, post them on our municipal website. So once again, the recommendation before you is that Committee of the Whole recommend that municipal council approve the levying, collection and remittance of area rates as shown in Appendix A, area rates 2022-23, and approve the 4% administration fee charged against the area rates collected in Appendix B, area rates for fire commissions 2022-23, as attached to the July 19th, 2022 Committee of the Whole agenda.
Thank you so much. Any questions of our presenter this morning? Counsel Hurdle?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you. I'm seeing a number of not changes in area rates, and I'm wondering how the organizations are able to operate at the same capacity currently or, or in the future. When inflation's gone up dramatically, they, they don't seem to have any real increases reflecting the current rate of inflation for the following year. And I understand that these are proposed by the individual organizations, but has there been any consideration in recommending a automatic adjustment for CPI for these area rates?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. We do rely on the organizations to, to make those recommendations. I will tell you, in the case of the fire departments, these are capital costs that are pretty much set in stone unless a new asset comes into play. And in, in this case, we only saw that with the Hans border area rate this, this particular year. So most of those numbers are set in stone. And to give you an example, New Minas, they know what their rate's going to be for the next three or four years still, because they have no need for any new assets at this point in time. So I had that discussion not, not too long ago, so.
Thank you.
Good question, Counselor. I had the same thought. Counsel Granger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I noticed Greenwich did not hold a ratepayers meeting. So how does that going forward, how will that affect the outcome?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. With respect to Greenwich, we did take advice from the commission on that particular rate. No check has been cut at this point in time to start those rates flowing and probably, I think, probably won't be going in the next day or two, but I think some discussions still have to be, to be had internally. However, we do need to set the rates for the tax billing process, so we're trying to, I guess, stay on schedule with that for sure. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no further lights. Any further comment, question, discussion before we look for a mover and seconder? I have no more lights. The recommended motion has been read into the record. Can I have a mover and seconder? Moved by Counsel Armstrong, seconded by Counsel Meisner. Discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing no lights, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. I believe that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. And I think you, you're free to go. Mr. McKay, thank you so much for being with us this morning. So we're moving to Item 8. We have two items of correspondence before us. An invitation to the Annapolis Valley First Nation Strawberry Powwow on page 64, as well as a thank you card from our student from Northeast Education Center, Northeast Kings Education Center, as a thank you for the scholarship that they received. And best of luck as they head out to the University of British Columbia. Hopefully, they make their way back to the valley when they're done. But best of luck to them as they go on their way. And I did hear that the Powwow was extremely well-attended and a, and a wonderful event. I had to attend my sister's wedding. I was able to attend my sister's wedding. Had a very enjoyable time, but unfortunately, wasn't able to make it to the Powwow. But I think many people had intentions to attend and likely did. So motion to receive those two items of correspondence. Moved by Counsel Hurdle, seconded by Counsel Allen. Discussion, Counsel Meisner?
I just want to say that I did attend the Powwow. I volunteered actually for the day on Saturday. It was a wonderful event. Lots of people were out from the county and a lot of people who lived close to the Annapolis Valley First Nation stopping in and saying, I didn't know that they did this and I'd love to stay and see what's happening and staying to join them with the feast at supper time and really participate and take in the activities. So it was really great to see the community come out and support. It was actually the first competition Powwow they've been able to have since the early 80s. So it's nice to see that returning to the Annapolis Valley First Nation and also seeing some of their traditional Amygma dances being performed, which haven't been performed on the Powwow circuit in Nova Scotia for some time. So really moving back to their traditional roots in terms of competition and embracing their culture.
Wonderful. I'm glad you were able to be there. Anything further on the correspondence? And I did enjoy my sister's wedding. I'm feeling bad now. All in favor or otherwise, please signify now. Next is Item 9, Other Business. The motion carries unanimously. Was there any other business to come before council this morning? Committee of the Whole? Counsel Kilam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to, more of a information. I attended the Greenwich banquet on, the other night. And at the banquet, I presented the Anne Longley 15-year medal to participants. It was a, it was a nice evening, lots of enthusiasm, and I just wanted to pass that along to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you Counselor. Anything further under other business? We have no public in attendance, so we will skim by that item. We do have a closed session. We do need to come back into open session with motions, so we will be looking for a motion to move into a closed session, but we do intend to come back out. So can I have a motion to go on camera? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Harding. Discussion on the motion? All in favor or otherwise, please vote now. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Counsel. We will be back.[1094.73]